Sometimes it's good times, sometimes it's bad times. But it's always meant because you care about the city you live in.
I want to thank Mr. Morgan for his service to the City Council. Thank you, sir. Jan McDonald, thank you for your service. Appreciate it. To Sean and Susan. You know, it's a great opportunity to be a councilperson. You have the opportunity to shape people's lives. You're going to come across a lot of issues. It's important that the people always have an opportunity to give their voice. And sometimes a good idea comes from anybody who lives in the community. It doesn't matter what you do for a living. Whether you do, you're a garbage collector, a bank teller, a street worker, a factory worker, a lawyer, a doctor, a child. It's really important that people continue to come to the City Council and express what they want in the community. Whether they don't want housing, whether they do want housing, whether they want commercial businesses to succeed, whether they want something for their child, whether they want a fire station removed or not removed. But the bottom line is, you guys are a form of government. So, again, I want to welcome Sean and Susan to the seat. And you know, change is never easy. It's going to be hard for some of the people and the staff, but also it's a learning experience for everybody. Everybody can learn from each other in life, no matter how many years you've been on the council, or you're a new person, or no matter where you come from. So again, congratulations, and I wish the best for the new City Council.
Thank you. Chantel Limone.
Good evening.
Are you trying to get brownie points holding my grandson?
He leapt towards me because of the decoration on my sweater. Just, I'm here tonight, I'm Chantel Limone, just to say how proud I am of our community. I'm born and raised here and been here for almost 33 years, and I think I have stood alongside each one of you, with the exception of our city attorney, in some sort of effort or initiative to make this a great place. And all of you, and all of you in this room, make Camarillo what it is. And las personas son la ciudad. And the people you are, and the people you are not necessarily behind that podium, but the people I see at the gym, when I'm doing my Christmas shopping, at the grocery store, at church, I appreciate you. And I appreciate the people in this room tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to us, under public comments? Okay. I'm going to go over here. This is the time for recognition of outgoing council members. Mr. Morgan, could you come up? I don't know if we should give you this or not, you already got one. Outgoing council members and staff, after a certain length of time, get a tile from the city. And Mr. Morgan was gone for six months once, when he decided to run for supervisor, and then he came back, and he got one of these. There's not many people who have two. Only people who've been on the planning commission until now, and then have come back to the City Council. But this is in recognition of dedicated service for Michael Morgan, from April, actually it was April 8th, 1980, to December 5th, 2018. You have given 38 years to the city. You've worked hard for the city, and thank you for your service. I can't hold this and shake your hand, but congratulations. Jan?
Your Honor, I respectfully request, and maybe you want to request, that I stay right here. As you can tell, I have a really bad cold. Yeah, I've never missed a council meeting in 20 years, and I didn't want my last to be my first. So I am here, but I'm going to stay in my own little bubble, and not get near to anyone, and I appreciate that.
Well, I'll get next to you when we...
Well, I'm going to stay right here, so I do appreciate it, but I think it's best.
This is in recognition of dedicated service for Jeanette L. McDonald, council member from November 1998 through December 2018. And so I'll say it from here, instead of shaking your hand.
Yeah, don't shake my hand.
How do we do the picture?
Photoshop them.
Okay, we'll do it when... Anyway, Jan, you have given the city 20 years of service, and we appreciate all of the service you've given us.
Thank you very much.
Kathy still wants her...
I don't get near me.
She still wants her picture.
Stand behind me, then you don't get in my germ space. Okay. Thank you.
Well, we have four people who would like to, who have certificates of recognition for your service, for both of you. So I... Excuse me. No, I don't have a cold. I've got allergies.
That was a fast catch.
That wouldn't be that mean. I didn't get it from you. I've had allergies since the fires. Mrs. McDonald, if you would like to come?
That's okay, I'll stay here.
Okay. Mr. Morgan, would you like to go over and receive your... And I will call them up. Gary Cushing.
If you don't know, I'm Gary Cushing, from the CEO of the Camarillo Chamber of Commerce. And we just want to thank Jan and Mike for all the hours that you put in, in this job. People don't realize how many hours the council does, how many ribbon cuttings you guys have come to, how many ribbon cuttings you've subbed for the other, if you weren't the mayor that year, you also came and gave the time. And I just want to thank you for all the time and effort you do, and I hope you guys don't go away and you still serve the community, because you guys are still an asset, whether you're on the council or not. So thank you very much.
Jan, I don't care if I get sick.
Well, I know, but then they might take it back. Thank you, Gary. Thank you.
Hugh Riley, from the Ventura County Council of Governments, Ventura Council of Governments.
I think you're supposed to stay up there, Mike.
Oh, I was sitting down, Mike.
You've got to do it for both of us.
Humble actor. My name is Hugh Riley, I'm the Executive Director of the Ventura Council of Governments. And just quickly, for those of you that aren't familiar with, a council of governments is made up of 10 members of councils from each of the 10 cities in our county. And there's also a member of the Board of Supervisors that serves on the board, and they meet every other month, they have committee meetings. Before I say anything else, I want to thank the city of Camarillo and all of its staff for the support they've given COG over the years. We've had all of our meetings here at your City Council chambers, and in the conference rooms of your lovely City Hall. So that's a thanks that goes out to Dave and the staff, particularly the clerk staff, for keeping us in order. But Mike and Jan, both of these council people have been around a long time, much longer than I have. I've only been Executive Director of the COG for, well, since 2016, so... But I know them, and I've learned to work with them. And I've recognized, and as many of you may know, without their contributions, there probably wouldn't be a council of governments. Mike has been around off and on in COG, and has been a supporter of it for many, many years. Jan's vote some time ago, and she'll tell you the story, because I can't, I wasn't there, but her vote probably saved the council of governments from being absorbed into blackness. It's always fought for its identity, but these two council people from your city have been instrumental in keeping the council going. And it represents an opportunity for councils, city councils around the county, to band together on issues that are important to all of you. And really, it all boils down to protecting your quality of life, which nobody in this room or anywhere else can argue is not a top priority for all of our council people. So Mike and Jan, congratulations on your outstanding service to your cities and to the council of governments. It was a pleasure to work with you the brief time I got a chance to, I think once, as you was at alternate, but Jan, many, many, many meetings. So I'll stop now, but I want you to know that outside your City Hall, in the realm of regional planning and cooperation, these two are stars. They're stars in the galaxy. So please recognize them for that.
Again, thanks for coming.
Andrew Munson? Assemblywoman Jackie Irwin's office. Oh, Andrew.
Well, Mr. Morgan and Jan, I wanted to come up and, just on behalf of Assemblymember Irwin, thank you guys for your dedicated service to the city of Camarillo and the county of Ventura as well. You know, we know you've given your heart and soul to the city, and we really, really appreciate it. So I'm going to go ahead and give you a certificate tonight from the State of California and the California Legislature, on behalf of the Assemblywoman. So thank you so much. Congratulations.
Oh, you're not getting, you're going to get near me, huh?
That's all right, I'll be fine.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kelly Long?
All right. I've always been getting guidance from Mike. Thank you very much. I'm Kelly Long, Ventura County Supervisor, so I serve you on the county level, but these people here serve you on the city level. And Mike and Jan, I just want to say thank you for your dedication and service to our community for so many years. Not many people can say or remember all the amazing things that these two have done, but it's all the time and effort that we don't see that really matters. All the connections, all the community events they went to. I've talked to these two about transportation, about water, land management. They have served on so many boards for the city of Camarillo, but also for the benefit of the whole entire Ventura County. And you have done an amazing job. I wanted to say thank you, to Mike, for your 38 years of dedication to this community. And Jan, thank you for your 20 years. I am bringing certificates of resignation from the Board of Supervisors from the past, and also for today. You have been an amazing part of this community, and I just thank you so much. Now, I expect, just like you were doing today, that you will also continue to be busy with all the different boards and so forth that you are, because our community really appreciates you. And as we know, busy people keep on being busy. So I look forward to seeing you. It's bittersweet. I love working with you, too. So I just hope that I'll be able to work with you also in the days that come. So thank you so much.
I have kids. I never get sick.
I never get sick either.
Or I always get sick, and it really doesn't matter.
Well, you can pretend.
So I will give you a hug.
Thank you.
Okay, we have remarks by outgoing council members. Mrs. McDonald, would you like to...
As much as I can.
Use up your voice, this is your chance.
Well, I just want to thank the community for giving me this opportunity. It has indeed been an honor and a privilege to serve our community, something that I will always treasure. And I appreciate working with all of you, with staff, with fellow council members. And we do indeed have a wonderful community, so I'm sorry I'm sick tonight. I never get sick. I don't know if you can all remember the last time I was sick, I don't. But I got it, and I apologize for that. But again, I really want to thank all of you for allowing me to be a part of your lives and serving you and on the council, and I wish you all the best, and to all of you, take good care of the city, because it is a very important place, and a very special place in the state of California and in the world. So thank you all.
Mr. Morgan?
Tonight, tonight I'm going to have mixed emotions. It's been 38 years that I've been doing this. And it was a time that, when I first came on the council, I remember I was a lot thinner, and had mustache, and longer hair. But that was 1980. As we, one of the, my goals was to make Camarillo one of the best places in the world to live. At that time, we were not rated even close. But today, we're the 23rd best place to live of cities under 300,000 in the United States. I'd say that's probably a lot of the world, also reflects that we're in that kind of category. Right? When I first ran, I dedicated myself to make this place a safe, great place to live. Hopefully, with all the things that we've done, and I could tell you, right now, you have as much to do as we did before. New police station, new fire department, I mean, new library, now we're going to D-SAL plant, new City Hall, the concerts in the park, which is one of the things that I left, I'm leaving behind, because I put my soul and heart into building that thing over three years. And it's just one of those kind of things. But there's so many more things that we've done, this council's done, and councils before you have done, because I've sat through many different makeups. And I think everyone has served the county or the city well. And you have, today, our staff that's chosen by our city manager, and our city manager's chosen by us, I think we've got some of the best staff, that we can match anyone in the county. And I think that's what helps make this city run, too, and makes us what we are today. But never, never doubt that you can ask questions, because there have been mistakes in the past by staff. Not this staff, not yet, but in the past. And so don't hesitate in asking questions and following up, because some of us have been here long enough to say, we know the history of this, we know where the skeletons are, and so we kind of know what to expect. But again, today, my wife is out there, and she's put up with me all these years, Donna Stan, raise your hand, there she is. And to know what we've gone through over all these years, with the elections, and all the different events we've gone to, representing the city, the Arts Council, the Fiesta, everything we've been doing, Celtic Festival, we put that together, too. We've worked, we've really worked hard to make Camarillo a good place to live, and hopefully we've left something behind that will continue being this way. You won't have to face those big issues like the big buildings you have to build, because now you're going to do the D-SAL plant, which is what I was really shooting for. That was my, water's been my thing since I've been this council. Charlotte can tell you that. I've been everywhere. I've been to Oroville Dam, I've been to Colorado River, everywhere. Well, now we're finally doing it, thank God. We're doing the D-SAL plant at the end of this, at the end of January, beginning of February. Ground will break, and you guys will know how lucky you are to have good water here and not have to worry about water as much as the other cities. So I've got one little thing I want to read you today, because I got it in the mail, and I thought this just sets so well. Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much. And that's what I hope the City Council looks at, together, and working together. It was Helen Keller wrote that, and I thought that was appropriate tonight. Again, I want to congratulate the current council, the new council members, and wish you much success. And please, work together. That's what helps make us work here in this city. And don't doubt your city attorney's questions, I mean, advice either. Thank you very much.
Council members, do you have, Mr. Kilday?
It's dangerous to give the microphone to a lawyer, but I'm going to be relatively short. I want, and I'm going to address my remarks to both of you, I want to sincerely thank both of you, Jan and Mike, for your many years of dedicated service to this city. I have found out over the last couple of years that being a council member is extremely time-consuming, and it involves countless hours, and it can be very difficult. And notwithstanding that, I've watched both of you sacrifice countless hours and days in order to serve the public, and it's sincerely appreciated. So thank you both.
Thank you.
Mr. Kilday?
Yeah, I'll start with Jan, and I've served with both of these individuals up here for 20 years. And Jan, I've had that cold that you have now. It takes about five to six days to start to be able to feel a little bit better. And Jan, you were extremely, and you still are, an extremely hard worker, extremely knowledgeable on the issues, you're steadfast in your beliefs, you were always extremely prepared when you came up here on the dais. We all had to be at our best, and that's a credit to you. And Jan has many loves in her life, but no love greater than that city of Camarillo. And she's done an awful lot to make this city what it is today, and all of us have benefited from that, Jan. And I got to know your family and your friends, and they've been very huge supporters of yours, and they'll always be there for you. And I want you to know, it was an honor and a privilege for me to sit up here with you for 20 years. I learned a lot from you, and I will continue to learn. So thank you very much. Mike, your dedication to Camarillo is unparalleled. Again, I had a 20-year, you know, relationship with Mike, and when you deal with somebody for 20 years, you get to know them pretty well. And you go through the good, you go through the not-so-good with them. And you get in many vigorous discussions. And at the end of the day, Mike, you always had one goal in mind, and that is what was the best for the city of Camarillo. And you always had that. I learned a lot from you, and I'll always remember, let's say, your uniqueness in the English language, and I loved some of your sayings, and I just want to share a couple of them with you, everybody, tonight. People are going bananas over pickleball. So I thought that was... We served on the Streets and Transportation Committee, and we'd be in a lot of subcommittees. And there's always requests for stop signs and stoplights. So we were speaking on one, to put a stop sign there, and we had a vigorous discussion, and Mike said, "Well, when we put the stop sign there, the issue's going to be is that people are going to stop there, and it's going to back up traffic." Well, yeah, that's pretty much what's going to happen, that's right. But Mike has always been good for a laugh, and he's always been good to kind of jab, and we kind of would banter back and forth, and we never took it personally. But again, Mike, it's been a privilege for me to serve for you. I learned a lot. When I was first elected, Mike was the first person that called me and said, "Welcome to the family." And Mike, I never forgot that, and you're part of the family, Jan, you're part of the family, and I know that you both will continue to be. And again, Godspeed to both of you.
Well, Jan, I too have worked with you for 20 years, but I think I worked with you for a little longer than that, maybe 22 years, because we worked on, you and Mike and I worked with a committee on trying to get the university changed from a 350-acre lemon field that didn't have water or sewer, and nobody wanted to serve water or sewer to it, to having that location moved out to the former state hospital. And you worked very hard on that, and you've worked equally hard on the concerts, and you have worked hard on the City Council, and I thank you for all of your service. Mike, I've had a longer relationship with you.
You even helped me win once.
I know, I was your campaign manager, I think, for, the first time you won, not the first time you ran. You're like a lot of us who didn't win the first time we ran, but I remember that it was April 8th, because it was my son's birthday, it was your wife's and your anniversary, and your victory party was at my house. I was at a PTA meeting, you were at a softball game, or a baseball game, or something, and people came in and they'd say hi, and Mike would say, oh, hi, my husband would say, "I'm Mike," and Donna would say, "I'm Donna," and they thought they were. Mike Morgan and Mrs. Morgan. So it was a very interesting victory party by the time Mike and I got there. But you did win, and then six years later, I got on the council with you, and of course, in the meantime, I ran. And by that time, we weren't such good friends, and you wrote a letter to the Camarillo Daily News and said, "I don't care who you vote for in this election, just don't vote for Charlotte Craven." He did. He always claimed he didn't, but he found the letter the other day. So we've had our ups and our downs, and sometimes we've agreed, and sometimes we haven't, and at least one staff member used to say, "You remind me of Big Brother, Big Sister, Little Brother." But Mike, I do appreciate all of the work that you have. But Mike, I do appreciate all of the work that you have given for the city, because you love the city. And I know that you will find other things to do now, because you have been always so busy, that all of your projects clashed, didn't clash, but they intervened with each other. So I know that somehow you'll have a little bit more time, because you won't be going to probably 10 city council committee meetings a week. So you'll have more time for other things, but thank you for your service. We now have the General Municipal Election of November 6, 2016, resolution declaring results. Could we have the report?
Yes, on November 6, a general municipal election was held in the city of Camrio to fill three seats on the city council and to present two measures, Measure E and Measure M, to the voters. The County of Ventura finished its canvas yesterday, so we did finally get the official canvas, which I did distribute out to you. As a result of that election, we have elected, we had nine candidates on the ballot, we elected the three top vote-getters. That would be Sean Mulchay, Charlotte Craven, and Susan Santangelo. Additionally, we had the two measures, Measure E and Measure M. Those measures were considered conflicting ordinances, so in the event that they both passed, which they did, the measure with the highest number of affirmative votes will control, and that is Measure E. And the resolution that I have for you to adopt tonight would both certify the election results and deem Ordinance 1159 adopted, which is implementing Measure E for the term limits. And the recommendation before you is to adopt the resolution certifying the results.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would move to adopt the resolution certifying the results of the November 6, 2018, general municipal election.
Second, Your Honor.
The motion and the second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to take a very, very brief recess while we have the two new council members come up, and the two...
We're out of here, is what we tried to say.
I was trying to say it delicately, but I'll go ahead and be myself. While the, the two retiring council members leave the dais. Could we have Susan and Sean come up, please?
They're over there?
All right, so we're here to do the, all we're going to say is fine. So I'm going to recite it, and you're just going to move with that agreement. Go ahead and speak. I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand.
So I state your name.
Susan.
I, Susan.
Santangelo.
Affirm that I will support and defend.
Affirm that I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Then I ask Vice Mayor Kildie to come up and present you with your certificates.
This is a certificate of election, and it's my distinct pleasure to present this to Sean Mark Mulchay. Congratulations, Sean. Again, this is a certificate of election, and it's my honor to present this to Susan Santangelo. Congratulations, Susan. Last, but certainly not least, it's another certificate of election to Charlotte Craven. Congratulations, Charlotte.
So comments by incoming council members. Mr. Mulchay, would you like to start?
Good evening. I want to thank you all for this opportunity. I'm truly honored by the trust our residents have placed in me. It truly is a privilege to serve Camrio, a place I've called home my entire life. It's a role and responsibility I'll take seriously, approach judiciously, and whose matters I'll work to address proactively. Although I am a product of Camrio's past, I hope to encapsulate the promise of our community's future, and I firmly believe that Camrio's best days still lie ahead. I'd like to thank those who are unwavering in their support of me, for those who voted for me, who aided me throughout my campaign, who shared my message with their friends, their family, and their neighbors. Thank you to my friends, my neighbors, my more than 20 family members across five generations who live in Camrio, and my amazing wife, Katie. There are truly too many people to name individually, but I want to thank each, I want each of you to know from the bottom of my heart how much each of you mean to me, the impact you had, not just in my life, but also in the efforts to earn this honor to serve Camrio. I want to extend my heartfelt thank you to both council members, Mike Morgan and Jan McDonald, for their commitment, their contributions, and their service to Camrio. You're handing off a city that has prospered. It's well-managed, it's financially stable, it provides our new council a platform to reach even further heights. To paraphrase a Greek proverb, "A society grows great when men and women plant trees whose shade they know they shall never sit in." The best time to have planted those trees was 20 years ago, as you have, and the second best time is now. There is still progress to be made, edges to refine, efforts to undertake, issues to address. Our work as a city and as a community is never truly finished, and there's much work ahead. To my fellow council colleagues, city staff, our city manager, I look forward to working with you, each of you, to provide the best for our city and our residents. To our local agencies, special districts, organizations, businesses, and associations, I look forward to collaborating with you in our shared interest and constituencies. And to our Camrio residents, I am honored and proud to serve you and represent your interests before the city. I pledge to approach my duties as a city council member in a way that is honest, transparent, and informative. I'll make myself accessible to the community through numerous avenues, means, and platforms, and engage in a continual dialogue. I will be deliberate, financially prudent, and constructive in how I approach matters before the city council, and hold true to the shared values in our community. I will regularly seek your input, ideas, concerns, and solutions, because the best ideas don't always originate from this dais. But we can be a catalyst in advancing the best from our community. Lastly, I will work to inspire and mentor those who wish to be involved, contribute in shaping our community through civil service, and perhaps one day run for this very seat. Because I too hope to plant trees whose shade I will never sit in. Shakespeare once wrote, "What is a city but the people?" Thank you again for this amazing privilege.
Did it. Hi. I want to start by saying thank you to Jan McDonald and Mike Morgan. I know this, in just my, my few weeks of getting to know the staff and the other council members, I've gotten a better sense of how small this community is, especially within this building. And I know it's not an easy night for some of us. I very much appreciate their dedication and their hard work in their years of service to our city. So thank you both. And I can't speak for Charlotte or for Sean, but I don't feel like tonight is about me. I have gotten so many texts and messages today about, tonight's your night, and, you know, you did it. And yeah, okay, I did. But I see this more as a night about our community. And I'll tell you why. When I was trying to decide whether or not I was actually going to run, I asked myself two questions. First of all, am I qualified? Do I have the skills and the experience and the knowledge to help lead this city? And the second question was, can I win an election? Because if anybody has lived here long enough knows that the incumbents have a very strong advantage, and it's very difficult. And so I sat down to figure out the answers to these two questions. And in my head, I knew I was qualified. I knew I had the experience from my work as a nurse and my life experience. But my heart was taking a little bit more to catch up. Probably a lot of reasons for that, but, you know, as a woman, sometimes we dismiss our abilities and our capabilities. So I had to kind of grapple with that. In terms of, could I win an election, that intimidated me, and I was worried about that. And so while I tried to figure out my answers to the two questions, I went to my people. And I went to my family and my friends, and the people that I worked with, the people that I socialized with. I've lived here for a long time, and so I know a lot of people, and a lot of people know me. And I went to them with my questions. Do you think I'm qualified? Can I add value to this city? And I got a resounding yes. And so that helped put my heart over the edge and caught up with my head, and I felt good about that. And then before I could even answer, ask them the next question, it was, and I will help you. And I will volunteer for your campaign, and I will knock on doors, and I will make phone calls, and I will dance in the street with your sign, wearing a flamingo outfit. And these were people that I had been watching all my life, and people that I'd been watching especially over the last year. And I knew that they weren't people that just talked, they weren't keyboard warriors. They were people that actually got out there and got things done. And I looked at my people, and I said, I can do this with my community, because my community was supporting me. I need to thank a few people in that community. Libby Higgins, brilliant. Working with you was a joy, and I miss you. But thank you, because you gave so much of yourself and your time, and it's much appreciated. Bev Dransfeld and Jessica Romero, you're in different places, and I can't look at both of you at the same time, but it was an honor and a privilege to run with you. You are both brilliant, passionate, and compassionate women. And I know that this is just the beginning for you, that you will continue to be leaders in our community, and I can't wait to see where your paths take you. My family. I am lucky enough, where did my dad go? I'm lucky enough that my parents are my best friends. And they showed up, I kind of knew they would support me, but I didn't know that they would actually knock on doors and make phone calls at text bank and do all the things they did. And it was fun to do it with them, but so, it just meant so much to me. Thank you, thank you. My sons, one is, one is here, one is at school. Honestly, I don't think they knew I was even gone. They're teenage boys, they're up in their room, and they were happy that they got to eat wings again for dinner. But I wasn't around as much as I wanted to be, and thank you for understanding that and for supporting and taking the silly selfies that I asked you to take. So many other people, I'm not going to even try to name, but you know who you are, and thank you. So, you know, I come back to that, why is tonight not about me? Because it's about this community. It's about what we can do together. I may be in this seat with other people, but I hope that the same people that were willing to be people of action during the campaign will be people of action after the campaign. I pledge and I promise to you that I will show up, that I will listen, that I will disagree with you, and that's okay. I promise that I will work hard and that I will make my decisions to protect and to enhance the character and value of our city. I hope that as a community, that you too will show up, that you will speak up, that you will listen to others, and that you will try to hear people who have different perspectives than yours. I think that if we do all of our, all of these parts together, that we can come through for our community and continue to make it the best that it can be. I am honored and privileged to have been elected. I thank you for your trust in me.
Well, I'm going to be fairly, fairly brief, but I'm still amazed by, by the results of this election. When I first heard from the city clerk that there were six challengers, I went home and talked to my husband and said, we've got to work hard, we've got to work harder than we've ever worked before, we've got to develop some new strategies, and we've got to develop a timeline, and this time, we got to make sure that every single, single thing is done on time, and is done. Because in an election, a lot of times, you plan to do things, and they just don't all get done, because there isn't time. But we did it, and, and we prevailed. And I thank the voters for that. I thank the people who helped me. I need to thank my husband most of all, because he took the lion's share. You may not know that we are daycare for our nine-month-old grandson. And so while I was off doing meetings and campaigning, Mike was home with little Ben. And I really appreciate your, your doing that and letting me get out and do what I needed to do. I have to thank my grandson, Trevor, because he has helped me so much with every single thing I've done. Trevor, somebody told me today that I shouldn't throw my signs away, because Trevor might use them someday. They just say Craven. He could run for anything. Trevor has been part of my being on the city council since he was born eight years ago, and, and he has helped me a great deal. I'd like to thank my son, my son-in-law, my daughter-in-law. My daughter isn't able to be here tonight, but they all helped in the campaign, even though they don't live here. They live in either Newberry Park or Ventura. Luis Espinoza was key in my campaign, and so was Jim Jevons, who lives in Arizona, but he made a lot of phone calls for me. So I don't think you're watching, but if you're streaming it, Jim, thank you. Again, I just thank the people of the city of Camrio for your trust, your continuing trust in my ability to make good decisions. And thank you. So I will turn it over to the city clerk for the council reorganization.
Before we begin, I'd like to review the process. So I'll open the floor for nominations for whatever position we're looking at. If there's only one nomination, a motion to close nominations, we'll elect the nomination on the floor. If there are multiple nominations... If there are multiple nominations, we'll vote on the nominations in the order they were received until we have a successful vote. So we'll begin with the position of mayor. Are there any nominations for the office of mayor?
I would like to nominate Kevin Kildee.
Okay, so we'll take that as a motion to close nominations? So please vote for the nomination of Kevin Kildee for the office of mayor. That motion carries unanimously. The next position is the office of vice mayor. Are there any nominations for the office of vice mayor?
I'd like to nominate Tony Trembley for vice mayor.
I move nominations close.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
He made the motion.
I'll second it.
Please vote for the nomination of Tony Trembley for the office of vice mayor. And that motion carries unanimously. So then we should turn the meeting back over to our new mayor.
Okay, so now we are going to have a recognition of the outgoing mayor. Do you have a certificate to come up here?
She took my gavel. She ought to have more than a certificate. I want my gavel back.
Okay, so we have a plaque recognizing Charlotte Craven for her year as mayor. And Charlotte is an incredible, incredible mayor. Your shoes are extremely hard to fill, Charlotte, even though my foot is a little bit bigger than yours. But it's still very hard to fill. But this individual's extremely bright. She's always prepared. She represents the city in the best way possible. And you are some of the best and the brightest, Charlotte, that this city has to offer. It's my pleasure to present this to you. And I know this is your seventh time as being mayor. So that's a record that will most likely never be broken, Charlotte, and you can be very proud of that. And every year that Charlotte's been mayor, we all learn a lot. And you bring an incredible amount of energy to this position. So it's my distinct pleasure to present this to you and wish you nothing, nothing but success in the years to come, Charlotte.
Sure. Tony always says, "Never give the microphone to an attorney because he talks a lot." So I'll try to be brief on this. This has been a different year. I've been mayor before, but this is December 5th and it was at 1:00 in the morning last December 5th that my daughter and her two cats showed up on my doorstep and I said, "What's wrong?" And she said, "Well, I think our house is still standing, but I don't know." And during, in February, they had a baby. They were still with us. They were with us for my son-in-law's laughing, he knows what's coming. Six months, three weeks, and two days. But during that time, I tried not to shirk my duties as mayor. I tried to uphold everything I was supposed to hold up. And I think there was only one meeting I failed to show up at. I was tired and fell asleep and that was the end of it. Can't even remember what it was. But I think that the mayor is just one of the council members. The only thing the mayor does is take motions and run the meeting. And I appreciate the confidence that the council had in allowing me to be mayor seven times. And I'm going to look up and say, "Stan Daly, I surpassed you by one."
All right, so now it's remarks by the incoming mayor. And first to do this job as a lot of, all the council members have said either today or previously, you cannot do this without a supportive family and the support of the city. And I have two of my biggest supporters here. My wife Janet is here and my sister Christina is here. And they have been steadfast in their support of me and I thank you so, so much for being there for me. It means the world to me. Sean and Susan, I'm thrilled, I'm eager, I'm really looking forward to serving with both of you. I know you're going to do just a tremendous, tremendous job. And congratulations to you and congratulations to your family and your supporters. Good things are going to happen and just think that's just wonderful for you. I can remember my first night when I was sworn in. It's a wonderful, wonderful night and it's something that you will never forget for the rest of your life. So congratulations to both of you. I do work full-time. Council members, I'm going to need some help with this. I will be calling on each and every one of you to help me present certificates out in the community and various other things. So, and I know that as needed and as your schedules permit, that you'll be there. So I do run this as a team. We're a team up here. We're all in this to serve you, the public. That's what we do up here. We're going to have an extremely busy year. There's going to be a lot of challenges here, but I know with this group that we're going to handle them and we're always going to remember what's best for the city here. I would like, if anybody obviously has questions, that it goes to the chair. And I will acknowledge each and every one of you at the appropriate time and give you ample opportunity to talk about the issues because that's what's really important here. So again, it's an honor and a privilege for me to serve as mayor for you here in the city. And it's really great to see so many people here too. It really shows, I think, the depth of our community and how we really, really support Camrio. And Camrio is the greatest city in the county. I hope there's not too many people that don't reside here in Camrio, but that's what we all, that's what we all feel up here. So again, thank you very much, council, for your support and I'm looking forward to a really, really good year. All right, so with that, let's move on to the, we'll do the consent first before we do, would you want to, or do you want to do sand reorg first?
No, we need to do the consent first and then we'll adjourn this meeting and move to our next.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the consent item and that's a resolution appointing the new trustees, Sean Molche and Susan Santangelo. So with no further discussion, please vote. That passes unanimously. All right. So let's see, do you want me to adjourn this or do we, okay.
Yes.
With that, we will adjourn the city council meeting. Let me, I don't have it.
We're not done yet. Wait, we're not done yet, sorry. I'm going to call to order the Camrio Sanitary District. Let the record reflect, we don't need a roll call, let the record reflect that all five directors are present. We have a, do we have any public comments? Hearing none, I'll go to the reorganization of the Camrio Sanitary District Board. We have, we want to receive nominations for the position of chairman and nominations for the position of secretary. And Madam Clerk, I'm thinking that the same ground rules you just articulated a few moments ago are still in play at this time.
Absolutely. All right. Are there any nominations for the office of chairman?
I'd like to nominate Sean Molche as chairman.
I will go ahead and second that.
Move nominations close.
Tony, can I put you down as a second?
Yes.
Okay, please vote for the nomination of Sean Molche for the office of chairman. And that motion carries unanimously. The next position is secretary. Are there any nominations for the office of secretary?
I'd like, I'd like to move Susan Santangelo for the position of secretary for the sanitary district board.
I'll move to close nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote on the nomination of Susan Santangelo for the office of secretary. And that motion carries unanimously.
All right.
And I'm going to walk a gavel over to you, Sean.
Oh, right.
Oh, wait, I already had one.
That's the big one. He already had one.
Well, now I got two. Count them both.
Then I hereby adjourn.
Okay, so.
Mike's not here.
I'll do it, Charlotte. I'll call the Camrio Community Development Commission to order and let the record reflect that all members are present. So do we have any public comments on the Camrio Community Development Commission? I do not have any cards on this.
No.
No? Okay. So we're going to move over Jeffrey to the reorganization of the Camrio Community Development Commission.
All right, are there any nominations for the position of chairman?
I have a question. How often does this board meet?
Currently, once a year in January.
Once a year.
I'm going to nominate Kevin Kildee and let the mayor run this one meeting a year.
That's a lot of confidence, isn't it?
I'll second and move to close.
All right, thank you for your support.
And is there a second on the motion to close?
Yes, second. Oh, I made the motion.
Please vote on the nomination of Kevin Kildee for the office of chairman. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any nominations for the office of vice chairman?
I'll nominate Charlotte Craven for vice chairman.
Is there a motion to close nominations? A second?
Second.
Please vote on the nomination of Charlotte Craven for the office of vice chairman. And that motion carries unanimously. So I'll turn the meeting back over to Chairman Kildee to adjourn.
Okay, I'll call the, thank you, I don't have a gamble. I will call the Camrio Library Board to order, please, and let the record reflect that all members are present. Again, is there any public comments for the Camrio Library Board?
No.
With that, I will go over to the reorganization of the Camrio Library Board.
Are there any nominations for the office of president?
I nominate Susan Santangelo.
And I'll second and close.
Second and close. You're making the motion to close nominations?
Yes.
And who's second?
The second.
Please vote on the nomination of Susan Santangelo for the office of president. And that motion carries unanimously. Are there any nominations for the office of president pro tem?
I'll move, I'll move, I'll nominate Sean Molche for that position.
Move nominations close.
Is there a second to close nominations?
Second.
Please vote on the nomination of Sean Molche for the office of president pro tem. And that motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so with that, I will bring the gavel over to them.
And invite them to refreshments in the lobby.
Oh, and you're all invited to refreshments in the lobby?
Yes.
And this isn't all. Can you hear me?